See none, I'd like to invite up Representative Walsh. Representative Walsh, would you like to tell us about your bill, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Ranking Member Walsh. I appreciate you giving this bill a hearing, I really do. I believe it is a matter of great importance, urgent importance to Washington. For most of the last year, as everyone knows, the state government has operated in an imbalanced way. Some Washingtonians believe in a way that's caused a constitutional crisis. Decision-making authority and rulemaking has been concentrated in one branch of the government, the executive branch. And the other branches of the government, legislative, us, and the judicial, have been largely shut out of policymaking and rulemaking in response to a declared public health emergency. You know, it is, it's a bad thing when one branch of the government, of any government system, has too much authority and too much control over public policy. You end up with public policy that doesn't work for much of the public. And I'm afraid that's where we are now. Recently, as you know, there's been a great deal of consternation in this state over the executive branch's use of a regional approach to reopening the state. And many of our constituents, many of our neighbors, have voiced intense frustration and dissatisfaction with that regional approach. You know what, how did we get here? So how do we get to this place where we're looking at a truly constitutional issue? You know, the status quo that we have in defining and allowing the executive branch to use extraordinary powers during a declared emergency has come about in a sort of piecemeal gradual way. The body of our law that describes these extraordinary powers is spread around a couple of sections of the RCW, the Revised Code of Washington. Chapters forty-two and forty-three primarily, but with regard to a health crisis, sections of chapter seventy-seven as well. And what the executive branch has done is it stitched together these sections and subsections of state law to put together a theory about unilateral executive branch control that has largely prevailed in the public discourse about what our state government should do in a time of declared emergency. And I believe that this theory, even though it has been successful recently, is flawed. And I believe it runs against the intent of our predecessors in the legislature who put together those pieces of law. I believe that the intent of our state law and our public policy around emergencies is meant to be very narrowly tailored. It's meant to give our executive really great, awesome power for a short time, in the case of a true emergency, to be able to assure the continuity government, to be able to get services to people effectively. And I think that we all basically agree that there should be some latitude to the executive to do these things, but this extraordinary power, this awesome power, should not be in place for well, on a year. We've been under these emergency declarations and the proclamations resulting from them for too long. So that's how we got here, what can we do? What can we do to cure this tension, this imbalance? I would even say this inequity. What we can do is we can approach a cure in one of two ways, it seems to me. We can either try to redefine what an emergency is, which gets pretty convoluted, or we can let the definition of emergency stand and give the executive branch a great deal, allow it to retain a great deal of discretion and flexibility in what constitutes an emergency, but we can limit the time and the place of the extraordinary powers under declared emergency. And that's what this bill, ten twenty-nine, tries to do. It limits in time extraordinary powers, the use of extraordinary powers, and the proclamations that follow a declared emergency to fourteen days. And it limits in place those extraordinary powers to counties. And remember, I mean, counties are the critical organizational governmental entity, I believe, in implementing a lot of state policy. You know, we have a system that some have compared to a layer cake of federal, of state, and of county and local governments. And this system is itself a kind of system of checks and balances and is meant to delineate clearly the responsibilities and the powers at each level of government. And lately, we and other policymakers have been drifting to a sort of scrambled, what you might call a marble cake approach, where those delineated powers are spread around in a more chaotic way to other entities, not federal, state, county, and local, but regional entities and all kinds of other entities. So what this bill does is it clarifies that clearly delineated structure between, in this case, the state government, the executive at the state government, and the county governments. And I think that's critical to good, effective governance for the people of Washington. Now, you know, this, I believe in the end, will prove better for delivery of goods and services to people, but you're going to hear, I'm sure, either in testimony here or in the days from now ahead, you know, bureaucrats and members of the current system are going to disagree. They're going to say, well, this would make our jobs harder. But they're not the ones we should listen to. The ones we should listen to are the people of the state, are the people who put us here, who put the executive in place, and we need to listen to those people, particularly who are mindful of the constitutional structure of our government. There is great concern in this state that what we've lived through for the past ten or eleven months is unconstitutional. And ten twenty-nine clarifies our policy going forward so that our responses to an emergency are clearly constitutional. Now, we can negotiate--
Representative Walsh, if you want to maybe wrap up so we can get to our folks who have signed to testify--
We can, sure, we can negotiate pieces of this. We can negotiate the number of days in time that we allow an emergency to stand. And we can negotiate some of the place. But the important thing is that the bill restates with clarity the proper constitutional order of our government so that we're never in this situation again. I commend ten twenty-nine to you and ask you to move it along. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Walsh. In order to accommodate the individual signing to testify, if you have any questions on the bill to the prime sponsor, please reach out to him offline and he can answer those questions directly. So at this time, we're probably looking at around two to two to half minutes per individual to speak on, who have signed in to testify. And so I will invite Vice Chair Lee Katoff to invite our first speakers to come speak to us.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our first speaker is Jason Mercer, next on deck is Tim Iman, and then Tyson Bryant.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the committee. Jason Mercer with the Washington Policy Center, thank you for hearing House Bill ten twenty-nine today. And we can agree a hundred percent with every decision the governor has made and still confirm about the balance of power being used to implement these policies. It makes entirely appropriate sense for the executive branch to have time-limited emergency powers to respond to an emergent need, but at some point, the people's legislative branch of government needs to be brought back in to this decision-making. And a new national study actually found Washington among the bottom four of states as far as that balance of power between the executive and legislative branch on oversight for emergency powers. Now, it could be entirely possible that the legislature would make the exact same decisions the governor makes, that would occur with one hundred forty-seven lawmakers in a public process weighing the trade-offs, alternatives, and doing a cost-benefit analysis of the decisions the normal way policy is made underneath our constitutional form of government through the legislative branch. One person behind closed doors should not have this power indefinitely. We can look at what happens in Wisconsin, whether after sixty days the legislature has to be brought back in, in Minnesota it's thirty days, but at some point, whether fourteen, thirty, forty-five, sixty days, the legislative branch needs to be brought back in, have oversight over these decisions. The executive branch should make the emergency policy on a temporary basis. At the end of the day, it's the people's public legislative process that should determine the policies we live under. And I hope that you would consider restoring that balance of power going forward. Happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you. We'll move on to Mr. Iman, Mr. Bryant, and then next on deck is Jeffrey Stiles.
Well, thanks very much. My name is Tim Iman from Bellevue and just want to thank very much the chairman and Representative Walsh for allowing this hearing and appreciate the bill very, very much. We did several of the lawsuits trying to challenge several of the emergency orders, and we did one on opening up the schools. And we filed that one in Lewis County Superior Court. And we found it eminently frustrating that essentially the governor's office took the position that there was only one court that's allowed to decide this, and that would be Thurston County Superior Court. And it seems to me that we do have thirty-nine counties, thirty-nine sets of judges throughout the state, and that this seems to be the one area where judges, only those in Thurston County, can possibly make a determination on whether or not the circumstances in that county make sense. It was disturbing to have the governor's office say, because it was more convenient for their witnesses, it was a hearing that was going to be virtual anyway, and yet he was arguing that it had to be in Thurston County. So I appreciate the aspect of the bill that says you can have this brought in any county. But I think Representative Walsh really nailed it, is that we have three co-equal branches of government. And what we found is that the judicial branch has abdicated its responsibilities and will not second-guess anything the executive does. That leaves your branch of government, yours is the only one left. And I would just ask you to reassert yourself, because I think people are pretty angry and frustrated over the fact that there are various branches of government seem to be immune to having a voice in this system and having one person deciding for seven million people how they need to live their lives, just breeds animosity, anger, frustration. And I think bills like this are really necessary. And again, I applaud the chairman for bringing this one to allow a hearing on it, and I think it's truly necessary. Our lawsuits did not get the job done, the judiciary is not doing anything. The legislature must, whether it's a Republican governor or a Democrat governor, I just, you can't have one person deciding for everybody. Anyway, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Great, thank you. We have Tyson Bryant up next. After him is Jeffrey Stiles, and on deck is Jeff Pack.
Thank you, everyone, and thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time today. Washington state's current state of emergency laws, particularly RCW forty-three oh six two twenty, as currently written, is well-intentioned, but a tragic state law that never should have been allowed to exist in its current format the way it sits. Granting a single individual such broad authority to set aside the Constitution, to set aside state laws at will and implement oppressive or destructive policies in the name of emergency really needs to be corrected. This is the right thing to do, even if the legislature would go on to continue to extend the state of, or the current state of emergency on the governor's behalf right now. Correcting this RCW isn't about chastising the current governor. It isn't about COVID, it's about safeguarding Washington freedoms for the future. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you. We have Mr. Pack, next is Anna Duff-- I'm sorry, Jeffrey Stiles, next is Mr. Pack, and then up on deck is Anna Duff. So Mr. Stiles.
Mr. Stiles, please proceed.
Sorry about that. Good afternoon, Chairman Valdez and members of the committee. My name is Jeffrey Stiles, and I am from Salton in our state's thirty-ninth legislative district. I testify before you today to stress that House Bill one zero two nine is a nonpartisan, purely constitutional issue that people of all political persuasions can enthusiastically support to restrain the executive branch's power. Since February twenty-ninth, twenty twenty, Governor Inslee has issued two hundred and ninety proclamations connected to the COVID nineteen pandemic. All orders remain active. In twenty nineteen, Governor Inslee issued only ten emergency proclamations and a mere eighty-four others since he took office in twenty thirteen. Such a consolidation of power into one man's hands contravenes our constitutional framework to co-equally share power between our three branches of government. During this pandemic, Governor Inslee has exposed glaring defects in our state's emergency powers laws that House Bill one zero two nine will fix. For context, our neighbors in Idaho and Oregon each have existing statutory and constitutional provisions to limit their governor's emergency powers to thirty days, along with mandatory oversight from their legislatures. We must do this in Washington by passing House Bill one zero two nine. Additionally, limiting emergency declarations to individual counties is crucial. It is insensible to force people in Benton County into a state of emergency because of flooding occurring in Skagit County, or to force people in Snohomish County into a state of emergency because of wildfires raging in Whitman County. The Department of Health's website illustrates the COVID nineteen pandemic is affecting counties in our state in vastly disproportionate ways that make Governor Inslee's one-size-fits-all statewide approach to emergency declarations wholly illogical. Declarations must be reasonably limited in duration and geographic scope by county as defined in House Bill one zero two nine. The provisions of this bill already enjoy widespread support across our state. I am pleased to report one hundred and fifty-seven voters from twenty-eight of our state's thirty-nine counties agreed to sign my initiative eleven fourteen petition, thereby representing a diverse cross-section of support for this bill. I ask you to restrain the executive branch's power and to restore the legislative branch to its rightful, co-equal place by approving House Bill one zero two nine. Thank you very much for your time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, and we have approximately twenty minutes left for the remainder of the duration of this hearing.
We have Mr. Pack, please, we have Anna Duff, and then up on deck, please, we have Eric Pratt.
Good afternoon. First thing I need to apologize that I actually signed up as con on this, because I am so used to anything coming out of Olympia, I'm automatically against. So my rapid-fire signed it that way, I'm actually pro this. We're here because our governor, and I'll call him, you know, our dictator government, governor at this point, has just failed his--
Mr. Pack, I'm going to ask you again, no personal attacks, please. Thank you. And I'm-- I'm trying to, there you go, thank you. Please proceed.
All right, so we're here because of, you know, massive economic failure in the state. Businesses have closed, things like that. I have personally seen so much inequity in how these various shutdowns, you know, we've got-- LNI militarized, we've got Washington State Patrol militarized, we've got Washington State Liquor Boards militarized to enforce policies, but these policies are enforced unequally. I believe, if I recall correctly, there was actually a video that a lady in one particular city put out where her restaurant, she couldn't do a bunch of stuff, and literally right across the street was this big, massive, open-area thing of a movie studio that was out doing exactly the same thing. So I am in support of this. We've rapidly reached the point where the cure is worse than the disease. We need to get ourselves opened back up, get businesses back up and going, and get Washington back restarted again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have, Ms. Duff is up, Mr. Pratt, and then next on deck is T.J. Miller. Ms. Duff? If you can take yourself off mute.
Thank you, I didn't see the prompt. My name is Anna Duff, and I'm a voter in the forty-eighth district. I urge every member of this committee to support HB ten twenty-nine and work for reform of Washington's emergency powers law, which is broader than-- oh, thank you, sorry about that. Is broader than virtually any other in the country. You may agree with every single decision our governor has made during this emergency, but will you always? We now have a precedent for an emergency lasting nearly a year with no end in sight, an emergency that has resulted in the governor making restrictions and mandates on what feels like every aspect of normal life, an emergency in which one person has had near complete control over billions in the allocation of federal funds, an emergency that cannot be ended but for the say-so of the one person who has assumed all of these powers. Now imagine your worst political enemy in charge. What could that person do with these powers? How could you say for sure that he or she would not abuse them? What could you do if you thought he or she was making catastrophically bad decisions? Without reform of this law, you would have little recourse to complain. You might speak out, but would anyone have to listen? It would be a grave mistake to view this bill as merely a referendum on the governor's choices during this pandemic. It is more important to view it as restoring a balance between the need to act quickly in an emergency with the need to make sure that our government is accountable to you, the people's representatives. It might even be a grave mistake to think of this bill as being perfect. Perhaps fourteen days is too short in an emergency period. To that, I ask, isn't it wonderful to have the power to make something better through the give and take of the legislative process? The power, I might add, that you, legislators, have been denied for nearly a year on matters critical to the rights and lives of the people you represent. As you seek to amend this bill, there is one principle I believe you should maintain. The person declaring the emergency and assuming so many unlimited powers should not be the only one who gets to say when it ends. In the hands of the unscrupulous, that is a sure path to abuse of power, an abuse of power that you would be enabling should you fail to support HB ten twenty-nine and reform this law for the future. So please, work for reform and set up a system you could live with in the event your opponents were in charge. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Pratt, next up is T.J. Miller, and then on deck is Carl Canthack. Thank you. Mr. Pratt?
Yeah. There we go. Good afternoon, members of the committee and the chair. I talk to you now from my home with my two kids. I represent myself in the twenty-fourth district. I'm speaking to you now in support of House Bill ten twenty-nine. I think that the past year, it is readily apparent, as just a regular old working-class citizen, that there's some failures in how the emergency response has been taken in the state. I would like to see some confidence reinstated in our state government by seeing a balance in the power instead of simply being focused in one direction in an emergency like this. I think the limitations and some of the accountability measures that have been put forth make a lot of sense. And I'm not like an expert, I'm just a regular guy who's concerned raising his two kids by himself with, they're out of school, I'm out of work, I mean, my life has been all but destroyed. And if I'm going to sacrifice my constitutional rights and the safety and health of my kids, and in the name of public safety, I want to make sure that every branch of our state government is taking part in that process for good reason. You know, we elect our governor to do his job, and I respect his position, but we also elect our representatives from our locals' districts to do the same for us. And for them to just be cut out is, in my opinion, a complete breakdown of what should be a solid system. You know, if you'd asked me a year and a half ago, that I would be sitting here talking to the state with this, I would have told you absolutely not, I have no interest. But I think now more than ever, it's become apparent that there needs to be some checks put in place in order to maintain balance that our republic and our state can depend on. And I, yeah, I'm appalled at what happened, but that aside, even more so going forward, if we run into a situation where something is even worse, we now have a precedent, like other people have said, that sets in motion the ability for other worse people to make even poor decisions. So let's do our job as a state, as a community, and maintain our constitution and make sure that it's, that if we're going to break it down, that, you know, we do so under the purview of everybody, not just one single person. I appreciate you letting me take the time, and I appreciate everybody here also taking part. I hope we all do the right thing, and so we can all do what's best for Washington, for our families, and for our wonderful country. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pratt. We have Ms. Miller, and then we have Carl Canthack. And then next on deck is Robert Runnels, and our last speaker is Nick Murray. Ms. Miller.
Hello, thank you, everybody, for letting me speak today. I'm here to testify in support of HB ten twenty-nine. I'm a small business owner in Skagit County. The last ten months, our governor has signed multiple proclamations, which has made it very difficult for me to run my business and navigate it for my customers and my staff. In the beginning of this bill, it states that the Constitution declares that all the political power is inherent in the people, and the government derived their just powers from the consent of the governed. It also goes on to state that no person shall be deprived of life, liberty, and property without due process. In March of twenty twenty, our world that we knew was about to be changed in an unimaginable way. A virus was here in Washington, and it was spreading, and people were dying. And in that moment, our governor had to make a decision, and it was to close down our state. At that time, that was the right decision to be made. But by late April, things were, lives were beginning to be destroyed. Businesses and families seemed to be falling apart, and there seemed to be no stopping how far he would go or if he would ever stop. It was truly disappointing that as citizens, we were left abandoned by our government that had been voted in to protect our civil liberties. COVID is real, and it's here to stay, and somehow, we have to learn to live with it. I have listened to our governor speak about the science of COVID nineteen, but science is just a theory that is waiting to be disproven, if it can be disproven. So if we aren't listening to all the science, then there's no point in listening to any of the science. During COVID, during March through June, it was truly, it truly felt like the science was only being followed with one agenda. Our government was never meant to be led by one person. We created branches of the government to create accountability. It's a checks and balances, and somehow, along the way, we have lost our balance. It is time for our legislatures to step up and make sure that the balance is returned and that no governor in the state of Washington ever has powers to stop us from pursuing life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. An oath was taken by each of you, each one of you, as you were sworn in to uphold the rights of the people that you serve. The people of Washington need our government to work for the people, and anything that has happened in the last eleven months hasn't been anything but for the people. I have worked hard to try to empathize all of this, but I have watched neighbors turn on each other. I've watched lawlessness and zero accountability. This is why I'm asking you, as a committee, to vote for House Bill ten twenty-nine. I'd like to thank all of you for allowing me to be heard today.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have Mr. Canthack, and then Mr. Runnels, and then our last speaker is Mr. Murray.
Very good. My name's Carl Canthack, I'm a business owner and elected school board member. And three quick points. In my opinion, the current law does not allow open-ended unilateral emergency declarations. Number two, the Washington already has infectious disease control law that is constitutionally compliant. And number three, there was no plan for implementing any type of a stay-at-home, so no agency should be allowed to do that. Current law, I can tell you with one hundred percent certainty that the original legislative intent of Washington's emergencies power law was not to authorize a governor to have unilateral authority to decide what is an emergency, when does it start and stop, and what can be done during the emergency. RCW forty-three oh six oh ten clearly defines three triggers that can allow an emergency proclamation. Those triggers are public disorder, riots, and disasters. There are no deadlines in the original legislation because the proper triggers are disordering physical events with unarguable beginning and endpoints. Existing infection control law. Washington has extensive whack designed for lawful infectious disease control measures in two four six one hundred, appropriately titled communicable and other diseases, which serve the state through smallpox, tuberculosis, cholera, the fifty-seven, fifty-eight Asian flu, the sixty-eight, sixty-nine Hong Kong flu, and more. This guidance should have been followed. No plan. The Washington pandemic plan had zero consideration for business restrictions and closures, no assessments, no impact studies, no criteria for nonessential, and zero implementation planning. We saw this in the unworkable idea that the unemployment system could somehow support citizens. The unemployment system is scaled to process seven thousand applications per week. There was no way that they could somehow instantly scale up and service seven hundred thousand applications in the first month. No matter who was in charge, this was a physical impossibility. What did they expect to happen? There was no plan. Washington businesses submit regular financial data to the state, including payroll. Why wasn't this functioning, existing payment distribution system utilized? The state should have simply transferred sufficient funds to each business to pay their employees to stay home. That would have been prevented delays and fraud. Support for businesses and their owners should have been similarly provided. There was no plan. And when you read the NPI guidance, there's one sentence of consideration for closures. And I strongly encourage that there, this be upheld. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Too much.
Great. We have Mr. Runnels, Mr. Chairman, next, and our last speaker is Mr. Murray.
Thank you. This is Robert Runnels. I am from Vancouver. And I am in support, as I get my notes up here, in support of HB 1029. It sets some practical limits on a governor's abilities to respond to an emergency. The current emergency powers were envisioned to respond to natural emergencies like fires, floods and earthquakes. They are not appropriate for these so-called health emergencies that could have been handled much differently and at lower collateral costs. Many other states have been successful with less heavy handed and shorter duration responses. Given that some lockdown measures can be looked at both as ineffective and effective, depending on which statistician you listen to, the least restrictive means should have been chosen. And certainly by a group of legislators in concert with the other branches of the government. So as this bill gets forwarded, please consider least restrictive means and help, help our government treat our citizens like the adults and taxpayers that they are. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray?
Yes, good afternoon, Representative Valdez and distinguished members of the committee. My name is Nick Murray. I serve as a policy analyst with Maine Policy Institute. We're a nonpartisan public policy research nonprofit based in Portland, Maine. So thank you for, for hearing this important issue and for allowing me to speak in favor of House Bill 1029 today. Maine Policy recently released a 50 state scorecard of executive powers, of emergency executive power, focusing on the process by which emergencies are declared, extended and terminated in each state's statute. The highest score donated the most, excuse me, the highest score denoted the most stringent checks on emergency executive authority. The lowest score denoted the most concentrated power. In our scorecard, Washington scored among the worst states because the governor is the sole judge of whether an emergency exists and therefore whether they may invoke those broader emergency powers. Let me be clear, this project is not a review of, of how any individual governor exercised their power this year. It's an examination of the balance of power between the legislative and executive branches as determined by statute. While we support this bill in its entirety, I would like to focus on one aspect that should be the foundation of any reform requiring the governor to gain approval from the legislature, the people's branch, in order to extend an emergency declaration. By outlining a consistent process, the legislature can remove politics from the equation. It can guarantee that people an equal seat at the table. And no matter who the governor may be or the political makeup of the legislature, the process should remain the same. So the executive branch every so often should be required to present its findings, submit to questioning on the record and receive a favorable vote to maintain its expanded emergency powers. I think this is a bare minimum of accountability in this day and age. So the constitutional principles of separation of powers and co-equal branches of government are simply too valuable to be cast aside even in an emergency. For this reason, I urge you to advance HB 1029 to restore an appropriate balance of emergency powers. Thank you so much for your time. You can find our report at mainpolic.org. And I'm available for any questions at nick@mainpolicy.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. All right. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, for getting everyone in and out promptly. And with that, I will now close the hearing on House Bill 1029.